Which means we are Facebook Live. This is a work session that is based for strictly budget. There are no other, there's no other topic on the table. We have all of our very wise budget people with us. We have Ms. Harden, we have Mr. Corbin, and we have our Budget Chair who has put in yeoman's hours on putting all this together. Many, many meetings, many, many consultations. And so, first of all, thank them. And so, what we want to do, Mr. Polkup is on the line, just for clarity, and Alderman Brooks is flying. And I feel sure Alderman Moore will be here shortly. But this is, this is an opportunity for us to, and I'm going to say this, a budget is a policy document. It is, it is what this Board thinks is important. It is what this Board believes we should be doing, and therefore, we are willing to fund it. And so, when, when I say that, that's true of any, anybody. That's true of the federal government, it's true of the state government, and it's certainly true of municipality. And so, I say that because I think this is, this is such an important, an important opportunity for us to say who we want to be. And I also want to say, as sort of a cautionary note to everyone, that, you know, we've added some extraordinary things to our community, which we've gotten really good results from, the, from the key parts, to need more, to the things that we're doing, and now we are obligated to keep them up, which means that that's an increase in overhead. But it also means it's an opportunity for us to bring people into town. That's the goal. We want to be a place where people want to be. So, in the long run, it should in your, to our benefit. In the, in the short run, we obviously will see increases in the costs of maintaining our parks and the, and the cost of doing other things. We do offset that in some way with our, with our new plan for the, for the streets. We are doing some of the repairs to the streets that are a third of the cost of what we've normally do, and we're playing, we're catching up with where we should be. So, I will, I will say that, and now I will shut up, and I will turn it over to the Budget Chair, so that she can go over what had been done and the comparison schedule between last year's budget and this year's budget, and the difference associated with it. And these are things that the department heads have asked for in, in some way, but go ahead, Alderman Sistro.
Okay. And before, before I launch into that piece of it, when you were talking about maintaining the things that we've built, I had an opportunity to physically align with someone, the new person in Parks and Development, and she was telling me that the costs, the cost of everything that, at Key that we've done, which has been greatly received by the community, it costs far more to maintain that than even the J.L. King, where you have several things that are, that are there, but they're established all in that new phase, the getting all the Kings worked out, that sort of thing, getting plans established, all that, figuring out how everything's going to work. It's just more expensive right now. So, so, the Mayor's absolutely right, maintenance of things we've invested in.
And I want to jump back in real quick, because I was in a meeting yesterday where we got a rather unpleasant surprise from TVA. There is a, basically, a gap between what we have been allocating to the electric department according to TVA, our agreement with TVA. There's a, like a 4%, you know, it's 12%, we've been doing 12%, and we're now having to go to 16% in order to be compliant with their contract. And that equals approximately $291,000 a year. So, there are a couple of ways to look at that. One of them is that Mr. Kemp was in need of capital, because he's got improvements he's got to make too. The other, the other thing is, you know, that means that there's a little relief for him, but that puts stress on the general fund. So, I say that to kind of give you what was a surprise to me yesterday, in which is impacting the budget that we thought we had a little better handle on until about 10 o'clock yesterday morning. So, that $291,000 goes, it does not go to TVA, I got to say that. It goes to the electric department, which he will then obviously put toward the things that he's in need of, like holes and other things. So, I just wanted to preface it with that, as well. I'm sorry, go ahead, Alderman Sistro.
Okay. So, in getting to this point of the process, and we're just at a point in the process, and we're not going to be adopting anything today, we're going to be talking and working through how we're going to move forward with this. Through the years, we've met with departments, see how they're performing compared to what they were budgeted for last year. Our departments do a great job of managing to their budgets. And then, back in May, we started asking them what things they needed for next year. So, so, that, we've gotten that information from the departments, we've considered the things that the Board has approved that would impact fiscal year '26 budget. We built a first draft, which y'all wouldn't have liked at all. So, we built a first draft, went back to the department heads, got them to re-generate their numbers. We revisited some of our, some of our group input, like the revenue estimates, that sort of thing. And we've come up with a budget that's significantly short. It, as you can see on the worksheet, the comparison worksheet, the one that looks like this, it's a little, a little million dollars more in expenses than we have in revenues. The additional $291,000 will make that be about 1.2, a little over $1.3 million difference. The things that would be involved in, at this point, we have two options. One is to increase our revenues, and the other, which, which, the only revenue we control is taxes, and the other is to cut expenses. And any expenses that we cut would be policy-type decisions, because they're, they're beyond just going, are you sure you're going to need that new copier this year? They're, they're, they are operational impact kinds of cuts. So, just quickly on the revenues, you'll see that we've budgeted an $840,000 more in revenues for this coming year than we had last year. Significant piece of that is sales tax increase. Another one-time piece of revenue that's in there is the idea that the county will pay us some prior year's drug taxes that they owe us. So, those are, those are two large numbers. If you look at the very first line, the taxes line, surprisingly, our assessed values, including any new things that came onboard this year, were up less than 2% over last year. So, so, that number is increased, but it didn't increase very much. The other, the other number is just sort of ebb and flow, and some of those are timing differences that I'm sure we'll get some rounds over time that we don't have in the budget right now. But we'll also have some expenses that go along with that, that we don't have in the budget right now. Below there, there are expenses by department, their fiscal '25 budget, the iteration of the budget that we have right now for '26. And in the column three, the difference column, you'll see how much it went up or down by office, by, by department. And because of the nature of what we fund out of the general fund, the big numbers are going to be police and fire. They're going to be roughly 60% of, of the budget. So, you've got all this a little earlier, so you've had an opportunity to look at it. I'm going to ask if Webb has something he would like to add to the process, or where we are right now?
Oh, we've, we've funded everything so far that is unreasonable ask from departments and what we think. And it's up to the Board to decide our path forward, and of how they want to set the policy for how we're going to go into this next fiscal year.
And the only thing that has to be, has to be determined today is an advertisement to go out so that we can stay on the public meeting schedule for, for our public hearings. And that is worded in an up to, if, if there's a tax increase, it's worded as up to X mill dollars. And that, that gives you the opportunity to refine this a little bit today, refine it more as we have public hearings, refine it more as you study these documents and see what you're comfortable in doing. But that's the only thing that we have to do today. Otherwise, it's a work session, and we'd just like to get your thoughts on what, what we wanted to go on forward. The $291,000 that the Mayor mentioned goes into streetlights, and so, on a street department, where right now there's a $105,000 increase, and that's a large piece of equipment that they asked, that would become $395,000 in increase. And I don't think anyone wants to do a dollar.
And what we've done in the past as it relates to increases is we have simply relied on the City Clerk to put it at the maximum, and then the Board, as we go forward, we make actual decisions at the Board meetings themselves. This is a work session, so there's, there's no vote to be taken. It's just a matter of advertising at a rate that we can then deal with in the, in the latter part of the public hearings and the decision-making process at more meetings.
And I will add that the ad for the paper, the template, the wording is set in stone by the state.
Yes.
We just feel that the city is considering an increase up to, like, all the other wording is set by the state.
Yes. And so, there is no decision that we make today at work session, but we, but we allow, Ms. Harden, to proceed with what is the maximum while. And we have done that, when we've been contemplating increases, we've done that in the past year or so. All right. You want to go through an item by item? Show, show some differences?
I can, I can. The Board of Alderman had a small increase from prior year, probably has to do with travel and training, because that's about the only thing we spend money on.
It's, it was half salary, what, half kind of lumber salary, so it's adjusting best, best little.
He was only allowed to earn so much.
Yeah, he couldn't, because of.
Over didn't take a pay cut.
Yeah. Because of that restriction, his PERS restriction.
Yes.
And I will note that this, this year coming up, we had a full year of PERS, a full year of matching increases. And I'd like to throw out a couple of other things. And looking back over, over the last, this, County Miss is year five, fiscal '26 is year five. Looking over that five-year period from '21 to '26, we've, we've made some pretty significant changes in, in our operations. I was surprised when I went back and looked that we've increased our police and fire budgets by over $3 million during that time. We, we have absorbed this PERS increase, which was not, not insignificant during, during that time.
Well, we had nothing to do with that.
We had, that was big day.
It was a big mandate, how about that?
Much like this TVA increase, it's just, it just fell, fell to us to handle. So, there've been, there've been things like that that have happened. In this same five-year period, we have increased taxes once, so far, once, for 187 mills, and that's, in today dollars, that's about $600,000.
You know, what is a mill worth right now for us?
It's about $330,000 right now. And so, 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 we've, we've done that. We've been able to increase the police and fire budgets, go to a leased fleet that's getting our Beijing fleet up to standard, that sort of thing. We've done it based on sales taxes. That's, that's what's carried for us, and I wouldn't have enough increase in our sales taxes to carry that, because our sales tax over that same, same period has grown a little over $2 million. So, 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 that's, that's how we've been able to fund. And we just, we just sort of hit a end-of-the-road thing. Courts, small increase for software, it's a critical part of their operations down there. The Mayor's Office actually has a reduction in budget expenses. The parking kiosks experiment that we tried and, and that were not cost-effective, that's, that's about $7,000. And the other 10 that's reduced there for her is a cut to professional services. IT shows a $75,000 reduction. Part of that is because they had a grant in last year's numbers, and they bought a $60,000 generator, and that didn't recur this year, so we don't have that, that revenue or that expense this year. The remainder is just generally software kind of things for them. Elections is a placeholder number, and it's.
Hopefully, we won't have one.
Hopefully, we won't have one. That, that's kind of the minimum it would cost to, to have one if, if we, if we had to have one. Also doesn't move the needle on the overall budget there. City Clerk's Office, again, software updates. Any of you who have computers and technology in their house or businesses know that that's just an ongoing, ongoing part of it. So, mostly it's the software updates for the City Clerk.
And we are tied to those things, because we're tied to Tyler, and the Civic Plus stuff makes us more efficient. So, all of those things work for all the departments, but also the City Clerk, everything funnels to the City Clerk's Office. So, she has to be kept up as well.
The Attorney and Staff is actually the prosecuting attorney, and that $5 difference from one year to the next is probably around the issue of PERS, to be honest, or around the issue of PERS. Legal would be Mr. Huskerson and litigation and legal advertising and that sort of thing. And we, we, as a committee, made the decision that we could, based on prior year's experiences and the things that we know that are, are in front of us, that we could drop the litigation expense number down a bit, because it will either be utilities-related, and they will bear the expense of it, or there's a possibility that you know now, or somebody will handle it for us. So, that one went down. HR, just, you know, PERS, a little year.
3% increases and just.
Yeah. And that's the only raises that are in, in these numbers are the longevity raises that are. City Planner, his numbers came down, and it's, it's just the debt and software costs in '25 versus, which included a lot of implementation and the ongoing cost of those softwares. External Services, we have some shared employees that migrate to other departments, and they've been, they've been having their salaries tracked here. They're just, they're just now back down into departments. So, so, it's, it's a, it looks like a savings, but it's just been pushed to another area. General Government, building and plant, again, just insurance maybe and things like that.
Well, I want to do an interjection here, because.
I want to do that interjection myself.
Well, I'll stay out of your way.
The thing that's not in here is the possibility of having to do, just upgrade to the elevator.
Or a replacement.
Or a replacement of the elevator.
I did, kind of was here, the elevator company Monday, and that elevator is not well-suited for the exterior, so when it gets excessively hot or cold.
Which we do.
It can have, it will stop. And so, he said we're at the 10-year mark, which is in the warranty, about end-of-life on that type of elevator.
Did he talk about replacement, or did he talk about repair? I mean, like overhaul?
He said, he said it would probably be replace the electrical panel, replace the drive, it would be.
That kind of.
Yeah. He said we're looking at that in the next couple of years to, to major, more than just something in small.
Did he give you a dollar value?
No, he did not.
But elevators are not expensive. And I talked to somebody yesterday whose son sells elevators, and apparently elevators are sort of like printers and ink. They give you the printer and sell you the ink. They sell you the elevator for fairly cheap, and then they gouge you with maintenance cost and, and repairs and maintenance. That's where they make their money, so.
Well, and that, that elevator is, tends to be fairly well-used. So, hopefully it'll last another year, but it's one of those things that might or might not come to land on us in this fiscal, this upcoming fiscal year.
Other Agencies is where we make our outside contributions, and you have a spreadsheet here that talks about what those outside contributions are. They are, there is a net decrease there, because we were able to, we have hit our bill grant match from the general fund, and we were able to reduce that from '25 to '26, reduce that amount. There are increases from the other agencies, and those total about $70,000. So, just, just, a bit here, a bit there, but, but the total of that is about $70,000. Cemetery is just literally that, maintenance of the, of the various cemeteries that have volunteered city through the years. I think this is, we redid the contract for mowing and that sort of thing, so there's a small bump there. Engineering, that's a department that serves us very well in terms of cost savings.
Some of those external services are gone there, so that's part of that.
Have pushed back, have pushed back in there. That's why the staff number has gone up in that department, that full, full cost is back in that department. Their professional service ask went up a little bit. And software, I didn't know what my abbreviation stood for there, so software costs are up a little bit, but. And then we get into the bulk of what we spent our money on. And I've broken those down a little, a little more than, than the other departments, because they are, they are in large, large numbers. The Police Department, '25 versus '26 staff is up $340,000. That's to fully budget all the positions. We did do budget a small hiring lag, because over the course of the year, somebody will leave, will hire somebody in. There's usually a little bit of empty space there, but we did, but all the positions were budgeted except for that bit of a hiring lag.
Mayor, may I recognize?
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm listening very carefully and closely at the Budget Chair, making sure I don't get lost on that CPA language. We're good.
I was waiting for CPA language.
I sound a little lost on her CPA language, making sure what she said with the staff, the police, I mean, I'm understanding this is fully funded.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page.
Seventy-five, seventy-five positions.
I'm, I'm very good. I yield, Mayor, thank you.
Yes.
Last year we did upfront fund our 75 positions, so that's.
We had a bit of a hiring for this year. And, and we approved some new positions through this year. So, so, 75 positions that the Board has, has agreed that we need, and that's what it cost to fund there. The fleet, there's an existing enterprise list that goes up from '25 to '26. There's also a request for additional vehicles, because they operate, operated for years with a very aging fleet, and so we've been trying to get that upgraded. That's, I believe, Chief Allen can tell me I'm wrong, but I, I think that's a recruiting and retention tool, as well as the safety issue.
Well, and maintenance as well.
Maintenance.
We had one of the oldest fleets for our size of this company, of years of age.
So, those, that's what drives that number. And to be honest, that's a small number. We're talking about adding five new cores, and probably the chief head is why we add Body cams, we're at the end of a lease with, with body cams, and with the, with that old lease, we prepaid a lot upfront and kept our annual cost down. This is, reflects the increase, is the increase in the annual cost, because we're not prepaying. We don't have the funds to prepay like we did when we first got into that body cam business, and a few more body cams. Software, just various software upgrades throughout the, throughout the department.
Let me, I'm going to interrupt you. Chief, that's going to be software that's associated with the Ops Center?
It's, it's software with the Ops Center, and then we had $3,000 that kind of did a transfer of webware, which went 19. That was pulled out of the budget from, so, but yes, ma'am, it's a variety of some, not strictly.
Strictly the Ops Center?
It's, it's much more.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, and then other, in the other category, they were able to bring their costs down, probably, mostly because there's a grant that was in there last year that grossed expenses up and aren't there in this year. So, that's, it has changed there. Dispatchers, costs up a little bit. That's a people cost there. They've changed the way they schedule those dispatchers, and that allows them to have, be a little bit more efficient, if you'd like to talk about that, Chief, and, and make their work schedules a little better for the individuals. It's a cost.
We were training and building personnel for other agencies, because they had more conducive 12-hour shift, and we've joined the Spitz and Jones and come to the 12-hour shift. And we think we've found a, a, it's going to make our personnel, our retention much harder, cutting down overtime costs.
And retention is, retention is critical in, you know, in, in every department, but in areas like that, you want, you want people trained and to know how to do those jobs well, so.
If it's cutting down on overtime, it's not an even, evening out?
Actually, I think it does actually lead to a little bit more overtime, because the 12-hour shifts gives you, sort of like the fire department, there's some built-in overtime.
Rob just going.
But overtime, unscheduled overtime, I think is what he's talking about. But there is some built-in overtime with that. Code enforcement, that number's up a tiny bit. Software, the Board approved all that throughout the year. The DUI grant board is a grant, and it houses two, two police officers there. That's a PERS difference there. Fire Department, we've fully staffed the fire department positions.
And what's, what's the? Yeah, what's the, for four sections, as opposed to five?
Eighteen, eighteen, which, which allows us to.
What a total, what a total count. How many, how many employees do you have?
Fifty-six.
How many?
Fifty-six. The safer grant match is that next one, and that was a Board-approved grant application.
Well, we applied, but we haven't accepted, yeah.
So, so, that's, so we budgeted it. We've done a notice to apply, we've not been invited.
Better, yes, better, better way to put that, more accurate way to put that. Thank you, yes.
So, that one, that one kind of comes with Board approval at this point. The other, other fire department expenses, they, they have some repairs and maintenance that need to happen, they've got some software upgrades, they have a building that they've been trying to get built for about five years now. For about five years now, so we budgeted to, to get that, because if we don't get it built now, it becomes scrap. It's kind of my, type of my, my. This is kind of my take of my, my non-professional take, um, what they were, what they were telling us there. Um, so that's, um, that's generally what drives the fire department increases. Um, buildings and community development, cost it down a bit, civil defense sirens, we budget, budgeted one replacement there, that, those are not inexpensive. Um, street department, they asked for, um, one large piece of equipment, a bulldozer, um, a used bulldozer that they were gonna try to, try to buy. And then they'll have that, um, street light bump that we got from TBA yesterday, so that, that increase is now three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Animal control, minor, um, probably oil and gas and purges and that sort of thing. Parks and rec, um, this is, um, getting their staff up to speed and providing them the, the things that they need to maintain. Cornerstone, Jail King, McKee, areas where we make huge investments in, in, in our parks, and we, we don't want to let them, um, decline. Um, so, so that's, that's where that number comes from. They have done a really good job of going back and looking at, um, additional ways that they can do cost recovery, um, increasing fees, extending services, um, but, um, improving their concessions programs, that will generate more money. So they, they, this is, um, um, number could have been worse, were they not as willing to work at, at trying to look at cost recoveries. Um, transfers to other funds, that's putting money in our capital fund, for the most part, and that's gonna do sidewalks. If you have a sidewalk that you're hoping to get built, that's gonna be grant matches, that's gonna be drainage.
Emergency drainage repairs.
That would.
Yes, which we've sadly experienced a lot of this year.
And, and truth of the matter is, this is a drop in the bucket for the things that needs to be in, in there, but that's a small increase there. Transfers to debt service, this is a full-year payment for the time crossing, um, TIP bond, but, but you see that play out in the sales tax up there, so. So it's, um, an investment that's paying off for us. Um, we, we plugged in a number for contingency for pay, um, it is, um, it is, um, not what the Stennis Institute, uh, for what it doesn't.
We don't have anything yet in the Stennis Institute, uh, we expect to have something next week, so this was a placeholder while we were waiting to hear back from them on what they, what they found.
And those two numbers don't go across, is the four fifty one?
No, they do not.
The four fifty is right.
Okay, all right, so the other one needs to be two hundred higher. Okay.
We have worked through the files, so two hundred and forty.
This is zero.
The, the early, the early numbers that I've heard from, from Mr. Ashford, when he was still with us, in terms of just draft, draft, early day numbers for pay increases, to get us to, um, the, the market value was about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the general fund. Most of that would have gone to police, fire, not just because of numbers, but because of what they're paying, and then engineers, those guys are expensive. So, so, uh, but there would, the, each, each position would have been looked at and, um, adjusted.
And, and I'm gonna interrupt again, that's at the one hundred percent, but I've also asked, uh, Mr. Ashford to look at what it would look like at a ninety-five percent or a ninety percent. If you remember, we went to one hundred percent of the median, um, and so he's gonna look back at the ninety-five percent, at the first, ninety, ninety percent, just to see what that would do to those numbers.
And while, while pay is not everything, and, and people sometimes think that, that that's the only way you're gonna recruit and retain somebody, it is not everything, but it is a critical part of it. And we saw this a few years ago, particularly in the police and fire departments, when we were struggling to hire people, because our pay was substantially lower than what other, other area agencies, and so, um, I think we've seen a reduction in turnover as we've increased our, our pay. We'll never completely eliminate that, it's just a part of one of, one of those departments, but, um, I, I think it's, it's an easy place to say we don't need to raise salaries, we could put that off a year. Um, but I, I think that two things happen, one, it gets you back into that cycle of starting to lose employees earlier than you might have otherwise left them. And two, when you do catch up, you have a much bigger hole to dig yourself out of, so that's just, that's my CPA topic there. Um, and then we plugged in a small amount for contingency, and it, it could be for equipment, for repairs, for grant matches.
Elevators.
For the, for the, um, street lights, you know, except that we found out about it before, but that's, those street lights are the kind of things that sometimes happen during the year that we didn't know about and didn't budget for, and so a contingency allows us a little bit of breathing room when we have to absorb those kind of costs. All of that gets us down to, with, with the addition of the, the, um, street lights, that gets us down to a million three and some change. That we need to either increase revenues or decrease expenses, and the truth of the matter is, we cannot increase revenues enough to cover that, which, um, because statutorily, we would have to have a, a referendum to do that, and we can't get there from here, so.
Nobody, nobody wants to do that. Uh, this doesn't take into account the outside contributions, does it? Is this on, in this, in this one?
They're, they're fully funded.
They're fully funded in this number.
Okay.
So, so.
Whatever, whatever they ask for is what's currently in the budget, and it's up to the.
So, so that might be somewhere that we say, like, a new pad of what they ask for.
A million page under other agencies.
Oh, okay, all right, that's what I was asking, was where, where is it, because I, I was looking for it, um, and it didn't come out to seventy thousand, so, okay, um, well.
The increase.
Yes, okay, yeah, sixty-nine and eight thirty-seven according to what I'm, what I've got on this particular sheet. All right, seventy thousand, I mean, rounding up is really good for me, that's CPA dollars.
It's easier, easier to remember.
Um, okay, well, that's a, that tends to be a drop in the bucket, but I'm.
And it is a drop in the bucket, but it's a stop point.
Well, no, it is, and, and.
And it's a policy decision.
It is, and I, that, to me, is one of those things, you know, we're gonna have a hard enough time, I, if we can't take care of ourselves, I have no compunction saying that I don't believe these guys should get a bump either, that they should stay where they are, so that's, that's just me. Um, some of them went up more than.
Dramatically.
Yeah, dramatically.
Who is the worst?
In the, in the scheme of things, dramatically, I mean, they're not really big numbers, but they went up, uh, from like, what is it, seventy-five to twenty-five? Seventy-five hundred, twenty-five, so, yeah, that's.
And outside contributions for people listening, or if they're not intimately familiar with the schedule, is everything from the library and the humane society to the boys and girls club?
Horse park.
Horse park.
And, and we, you know, have given all of them, over, over the years, we've given them something, these are just the changes that they're asking for more, and the more is the seventy thousand, which is been built into this, so.
And, and their, their costs go up just like.
Sure they do.
And if there's a sheet vision, haven't they ever actually given in the reply?
All right, anybody got thoughts they wanna share at this point in time? Mr. Polk, if you're, if you're, if you're there and you wanna say something, um, just, you can butt in and we'll listen, because it's, it's hard to see a hand raised under this set of circumstances, so.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how to use this app, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
What, what I would like to say, this, this board has, has already, uh, by a unanimous vote, set the precedent on sewer rate increases that, that, that we don't just want to meet base obligations to make things work, we are in a, in a, in a spot now where we need to be able to have room to grow. Um, so if, if, I'm reading these, these stats correctly and these numbers, and I am trusting that, that our finance, uh, director, uh, Webb Corbin, that Sandra and Lisa and our, our department heads are good at their job, and I trust that they are. Um, what they have presented to us is something to meet the minimums, to make it work, and I don't think we're in a position anymore to simply make this work, and, and we are primed to grow. So I did ask, ask, uh, our mayor to go ahead and present the maximum that, that we are able to request of ten percent of the existing mileage to give us room to, to, not to do the least essentially, but have, have opportunities, uh, to grow, and I don't want us to be in a spot where, uh, Cody and Stephen and Chris and Chief Ballard or anybody else are being, are being offered higher pay to go elsewhere. Our staff have done it, have done an incredible job, and they are due to be paid to the best that, uh, we can, we can pay them.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate this. Um, pretty, pretty, too much to the point, Derek, thank you.
And, and that ten percent would, would be roughly one million fifty thousand dollars.
Three point one five? Yeah, because we're at thirty-one.
It has to stay just below two percent.
Yes, okay. Um, and, and so I'm gonna make myself very unpopular with the, um, with the fire department, because one of the things is that if I, if we're gonna have to choose things to, to reel back on, I think, I don't think we can necessarily afford that safer grant, so, um, that's one of the things that I would say, if we are looking at, at trying to reduce, reduce some costs here somewhere, um, or get to a point where we can not necessarily have to go up three point whatever, uh, because that's a, that's a pretty dramatic increase. Um, you know, I think there may be some opportunity to, to whittle some of that back down, and since we're not obligated at this point, that's one of those potential ways to reduce that, that bottom line number. So, sorry, Chief, just, you know.
Aaron, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Because last year when we started the safer grant, we didn't set aside a full, and we ended up not needing it. Can we leave that instead of saying we're not gonna fund it at all, can we kind of leave that optional, see what else we can cut back on first?
Oh, yeah, I'm just giving you my opinion, I mean, this is, this is a board decision, so.
And I was sorry about outside contributions.
You mean cutting them?
Cutting.
Cutting them totally?
No, the excess.
Oh, I, yeah, I already, I already agree with that, that's a seventy thousand, yeah, but.
I don't wanna do anything on the bulldozer, because Chris Black can save us more money with that than what.
Well, and we can do a lease purchase on that, that's.
What I was gonna say was, we can drop that, we can, we can drop that, that bulldozer from the hundred and seventy-five that he was anticipating to buy it outright to fifty, which would allow us to lease purchase it, so.
Um, I do not wanna raise the police positions if possible, and then the cars, because if we don't buy that now, we're gonna buy two hundred and fifty next year, and we won't have the money there to do it either. Um, and, and, so, that's just my opinion.
Okay, where else, from a cutting standpoint?
Well, that's my main, I just don't want somebody else chomping.
Okay, all right.
I'm, I'm, I'm just rarely gonna be a bigger advocate for increasing our employees' pay and keeping us in the market levels than, than many on the board. But in prior years, when we have tried to feather these kind of things in, we didn't put, we didn't put what's probably a sufficient amount in this year, but we could drop that number a bit and, um, and, and do it on January first as opposed to October fourth.
We have done that, we've slid them into the, into the next year to give a four, three, four months of grace along the way.
So I'd be, I'd be good with taking that number down to three hundred.
Correct.
So there's one hundred and fifty.
And the parks and rec increase, I think they've got potential to, their revenues over there after.
I think they do, until they prove it, I'm, I'm not comfortable taking that down. I mean, as it, as it, as it changes over the year, we have a better projection, I don't disagree with that, but I'm real uncomfortable taking it any further down. Greg, you think y'all can bump up any more than you've already shared with us at this point?
Well, you know, we increased it once since the, and that was about the fourth, fifth, now I'm looking through, it's a little hard, you know, because they were, uh, we were just waiting for this for so long, so it's kind of hard to speak, but I think, I think we can meet the numbers if we can.
Okay, all right. All right, Alderman Vaughn, anything you wanna share, other than, you know, you, we all know that we hate this average year, and you to, to have to raise taxes. Alderman, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Perkins, anything?
I thought, I thought you were kinda in general seven.
I did, he said nothing.
I have to ask more.
He said he didn't have anything.
Just thinking.
At this point, he was just thinking.
I'll continue listening for a while.
Okay, all right. Alderman Skinner?
I'm still just kind of thinking this way, I'm just kind of looking through.
All right, Alderman Vaughn?
I also have a standing question.
Okay. Share with us while you're at it.
It's, it's in, it's in fire and services, so it's not.
Oh, okay. It's not a general fund, okay, all right, okay. All right, Webb, are you kind of keeping a tally going here?
I'm keeping a tally, I was, I was gonna see where we're at after those suggestions, so.
Okay.
To get it back down to the three million, we're gonna pretty much have to cut out three hundred thousand.
Okay.
Three forty TV.
To get it back down to three mils?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, um, what about the, the siren? We've got, we've got all but one, I think, that's working, and that's the whole road one.
We've done a grant application, but they're very slow, um, now with siren grants, it takes up to two years to order. I don't know, it's because they've gone to more phone notifications than actual sirens, and maybe that's where VMS put their money.
Well, I think it is, actually, and, and I've had this conversation off and on over the last couple of years about how that, that particular reliance is changing, uh, because people have cell phones, and on, on the cell phones are weather apps, and that's what they're using these days, so the.
And your code rain software that this.
Yes, and, and people, um, while it seems to be a difficult topic to make people understand, a civil defense siren is not intended for anybody other than people who are outside at the time to go back inside to their homes for, for safety, so it's not intended to be heard, even though you may hear it from your house, it's not intended to be, I mean, from inside your house. It's not intended to be heard at work.
Ninety-five, seven is for a full siren plus some maintenance that we need to get to.
Okay, well, we've got to have some budget for it, it's just the, the new sirens.
Our proposal, are they fifty-four thousand?
Yeah.
Which would be a match.
The new siren is sixty-seven five, so, and I think the match on this grant we've applied for is a twenty percent match, and that would take us down to about thirteen-five.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Well, we need to do some maintenance on.
Yeah.
Can we, can we take down, that down to four to fit it in?
That's where I was gonna go with it, is we take that down to.
Because we do have some older sirens that are gonna need.
They're gonna need maintenance.
They need some new batteries, and those batteries are several hundred.
And we can apply for the grant, and it may or may not come to pass, so, um.
But we have to.
Yes. So, yes, we can take that down.
Is the safer grant on the table, or is it gonna stay in the?
It is for me, uh, and by the way, guys, while we're just kind of talking, there's, there's food back there, because I didn't want anybody to feel like they had to get up and go somewhere for, for something while we were having this probably longer discussion, so. Um, I'm, I'm inclined to think that the safer grant should be off the table, uh, on the table for, for removal. I just don't, we can afford it, I also think there may be an opportunity for us to, um, man Fire Station Five with a potential joint operation. So I think we're, we're in contact with the county on possibly manning Five through some of what they're doing, which I think would be, um, obviously beneficial to, to the city from the west side of town, so.
The street department bulldozer that y'all discussed, it's in there for a total of, it's gonna go to like a three-year lease.
We put it in originally at one seventy-five, and I took it down one twenty-five, so it's in the round of fifty thousand or less.
Yes.
What is this now?
In my, in my listening to.
Bulldozer is at one twenty-five?
It's at one seventy-five, that's the price of a good used bulldozer, according to Chris Black, and we're proposing financing it over four or five years, again, that annual cost under fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, could come off of this sheet right here.
Well, the big, the big numbers, as, as Alderman Sistrunk said, the big numbers are.
Fire and police.
Fire, police, and pay rates, that, right now, we're sitting at a contingency, and we won't have a better number until we get that, but, you know, if you plan on doing something, then you could plan on doing two fifty, you could plan on doing something, um, in terms of, of how we ask Webb to look at the budget as we're moving forward, but, and I would suggest that, you know, something is better than nothing, I don't, um. Greg, uh, have you looked at what it looks like, if you, have you had any conversations with Mr. Ashford about what it looks like at ninety-five percent or ninety percent rather than a hundred percent? For purposes of today, um, we'll, we can decide if we want, leave two fifty in there or four fifty. For purposes of today, we'll, we can decide if we want to leave 250 in there or 450. And I don't have a way to. Or 300, okay. That'd be negotiate. I don't have a way.
250.
Do you, do you have a way to, I mean, what would be, if, if it's 100% is X, then 95% will be Y, but.
Except, except that you don't know.
Oh, shut up Lisa.
And then I agree with this, my boys always tell me, I said, I will never use algebra. And then there you are using.
I know, I apologize. Clearly, I don't have a formula of any kind, but I'm just trying to get a number that, that we can potentially think about plugging in there. So I'll go back to the budget chair and say, do you have a?
No.
No? Alright, well.
So, so we will, so we, we're trying to get out of a way of raising the millage, right?
Well, I don't think, I don't think we're going to get to no, no millage raise. We're trying to get to whatever we are, we are willing to do to do what we believe is right for this next year for the city, which goes back to, you know, it's a policy statement, which goes back to, we have, we've improved our parks, which is going to require more funding to keep them up. You know, we, we need to keep going on our streets and the street bond, I think there's an opportunity to bring a street bond forward for the next board meeting. I think Alderman Sistrunk wants to do that for us to be able to continue our street projects.
And, and that won't have, that street bond won't have an impact on this budget because the, because when it would be issued, there would be an interest only payment. We, one, we haven't set an amount to issue, but there will be an interest only payment this year '26 and we can cover that in the MIMON monies. So it doesn't impact the '26 budget and may or may not impact the '27 budget.
Okay, well, I would think it would definitely impact the '27. Anyway, but those, those are again, policy things that we want to say that these are the things that we want to keep doing, you know, and improving the streets is, I think, is critical dialogues.
And it's also, I mean, I know this is probably not really a popular topic for some, but this also does not address the fact of the things that we are not funded. We are not doing stormwater, we're not doing a lot and I don't, we all know what happened with just wastewater treatment, for instance, when we, we don't invest in our infrastructure, it ends up costing us more long run, long term. And at some point as a city, we've got to get ahead of that at some point. We cannot keep trying to barely get by. We need, we need to try to get ahead now. And I mean, yes, we do need to go ahead and make people spend, you know, within their means, but we also need to look at getting ahead of a lot of problems that are.
Yes. And the, you know, the full transparency, the discussion, obviously, as we look around at other municipalities and what they have experienced with their reassessments. We believe that we're going to be reassessed next year, but that doesn't take care of this year. And talking with, and I'm going to quote Ms. Harden, because she talked with our tax assessor collector who did not believe that we would be impacted nearly as hard as the other surrounding communities because she thinks that we've been keeping up with our assessed values over the years. So what we may think we're going to get a bump from next year, we may very well not. So they're, you know, delaying it just puts us that much further behind because if, if she is accurate and it's her, you know, it is her position, then we will find ourselves that much further behind by not doing anything this year, so.
She said there was no guarantee that we would get the same increase as last year as, as the surrounding areas.
Okay, alright. Alderman Pocup raised his hand according to our IT person. Yes, sir.
I did, yes, yes, thank you for that. This is, this is obviously a new process for me, so I'm trying to, to understand the, the objective and goal for today. I believe Alderman Sistrunk said that this is potentially the fourth iteration of these numbers after starting back in May and then working it down. I, I don't want to start off my tenure second guessing the expertise of our department head. So if, so if they're saying this is what we truly need to, to take care of business, is it, is it best to, to present this as is and for, and encourage trust in our staff? And then adjust that down if there is not an appetite for it or to adjust it down now?
Well, we have presented it as it's being requested. So the question is now, do we, do we collectively have an appetite for it? And where, if we're going to make cuts, where would we make cuts? And I, I don't know that we wish to bump that significantly from 1.0, 3.12. I, I don't know if there's appetite for it or not. Alderman Vaughn asked.
We always had the opportunity to let them go back and look and see how much they, how much can they cut anymore. We always allowed them the privilege to go back and.
Yes, well, they did.
And they've done that.
Yes, this is what they did. So this is what they came back with, so.
Because we were too moved.
And so, and, and yes, this is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, so this is, this is the fourth, I, I think that's right, the fourth iteration of what, of what they have, they have landed on as this is what we think we need going forward.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Do what your department head think, they think, that's what they think.
Yeah, yeah. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, thank you very much for the recognition. I do feel that it's appropriate for me to make a few remarks at this time. It seems to me that there is an appetite that is developing very increasingly for a millage increase. It is my opinion that many of my constituents are not sharing that same appetite. After listening, listening very carefully to the very studious presentation by our honorable Budget Chair, I am of the opinion at this point that we need to be as conservative as we can as policymakers. We are the elected policymakers. We have given deference to the department heads, but the decision rests with us. We are the ones who have the bottom line. I am of the opinion that we should remove the safer grant. We just simply cannot afford to do everything that is asked. I am of the opinion that we need to leave the police as is to keep a very safe community. In a few days, we're going to have another 24,000 plus of students coming to our city and we welcome them here. We'll have a daily population here of 50,000 more or less, so we need to keep that there. So I propose, just my policy recommendation that we remove the safer grant, that we do not fund the outside contributions as is. That it's going to always be a Santa Claus, a wish list and a Santa Claus request. Even the Harsh Park, I know they're doing great things in our city. Mayor, when Ms. Brickley Miller was here, who was so articulate, so passionate, so fervent and did an extraordinary job, it was not the board's intention to increase the Harsh Park contribution from 1993 to 2025, but it just kept rocking along, rocking along, rocking along, you know.
It's the original contribution, Vice Mayor, do you call?
It's talking about 30,000, somewhere in that area.
Okay, we weren't here for it, so.
But, but it, it just kept going up, but no one had an appetite to, to stop it. And so, and I think we need to cut that down to a very conservative amount, not what they're asking for. The other big item here is the pay raise. And that, if we fund it, it's going to be over a half a million dollars. Now, this is just the Vice Mayor, the employees is doing a great job. They all deserve, you know, the max, we've been, we've, this administration of Mayor and your leadership has done very great for the employees. They have been given a very conservative package under your leadership. That's commendable. We cannot afford, just straight talk, nothing negative on employees, to do that every year. I, the 450,000 is still a lot to me. You know, 3% pay raises this year, I know it's not popular, but I'm trying to give my respectful recommendation to cut this cost down of 3.0, I mean, any millage is too much, but 3.125 is excessive in the Vice Mayor's respectful opinion. But in summary here, reduce the outside contributions to a very conservative number. Fire Department, delete the safer grant, leave police as is. Raises, I could, you know, I really, Mayor, just all candidness and respectfulness and professionalism with you can pass on the raises.
Completely?
Completely, this year. And then we'll come back next year. No disrespect to the employees, but as an alternative, 3%, they, they're, they're getting good salaries. I'm not against giving them, I'm trying to develop a budget. And then again, if a higher amount goes through, then I think it needs to be a little delayed. I've advocated this before until April 1, there's less impact on the budget. But this is just the Vice Mayor. I'm only weighing in now because I see how the, the, the movement is going. So those are the things that I, I would recommend, Mayor, just out of respectful communication to you and the board.
Okay, alright. Well, that's exactly what we're here for. Yes, ma'am.
Webb and I have a big telephone call that's around here.
Okay.
I've got, um, depends on if we're taking the safer grant out or not.
Okay.
If we take the safer grant out, I'm down to 687,117, which is roughly 2 mils. If the safer mill's still in there, it's not 37, so.
Okay.
That's with.
What are your, what are your numbers?
Well, I was taking off all of the outside contributions. If we want to do a marginal, that would be the increase, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, whoa.
The increase.
Margin increase.
Yeah, the margin, yeah.
Yeah, reducing the bulldozer 125 from 175 to 50. Decreasing the pay raises from the 450 in there to 300, per what Sandra said earlier. And then the civil defense siren reducing at 45.7 and then the safer grant 250 gets me down to 687,117.
Okay, so roughly 2 mils.
One question.
Yes, sir.
I know TVA coming with an increase. Do we know when that increase coming?
So you're talking from 291?
TVA.
Yeah, no, that, that's correct. That's started now.
How much is that?
Well, it's 11,000 a month? Is that what was it?
No.
11 to 30.
That's right. It went from 11 to.
36.
36, okay, so. Yes, so the 291 is an annual amount, but it started, I think, well, we started to calculate it now, we're going to start October 1. We're doing it now?
It was on the annuals, which is recent.
Okay, alright. Well, we're starting it now, so that impacts this year's budget by, what is that, 3 months worth? 2 months worth?
It, it would, it's a contractual thing that, that we were out of compliance with. We weren't complying with the contract with TVA, so they're not making us go back, but they're making us fix it going.
It's not retroactive.
Maybe go start now.
Yes, and so now would be this month.
The mayor's now, maybe it's going to start the electric department, so that should, yep.
Not go ahead, please.
No, it does not help the general fund at all. Yeah, in fact, to the contrary. But it still, it will, in your terms of benefit, as opposed to going to TVA, it stays with the city so that Mr. Kemp can do what he needs to do in the electric department with poles and the other associated things. Yes, sir. Alderman Pocup, your hand's raising, I guess.
Yes, thank you. I, I want to comment again real quick on, on the pay raises. It, I think it is a large number. It's also a reflection of that we are still behind and that, that is going to continue to grow until we do make an investment to invest in our staff. I would have a hard time saying that we're the best small town in the south and we're doing this to grow and doing that to grow without adequately compensating our employees to where they're not inclined to leave and go to the next, that pound over. So it is a large number, but I think it is an investment in being the best town in the south and showing that we do want to invest in our, in our employees and keep them here.
Okay, so when you're, when you're weighing in on this from a topic standpoint, you're, you're, let's say, going with a higher number of 450 or you're looking at the 300 that is sort of the compromise number?
I'm, I'm, I am going off of whatever was presented as being, as being adequate based on studies.
Okay, well, we don't have the study yet, so we were wagging it, basically.
Okay, so if it, if it, if it is 450, I'm on board with that. If it's, it is less than.
Okay.
The principle is that, that we need to, we need to be in a position to actually fairly go above and beyond to make sure our, our employees are cared for.
Okay, I got, we got the principle. Yes, ma'am.
And, and there's a, there's a spinoff effect of all this too. It's, it's difficult to increase pay in other departments, sanitation, utilities, the airport, whatever. It's, it's difficult to increase pay in those departments which are enterprise funds and generate their own money and not also do general funds. So if we're not, if we're not going to do general fund increases, we're essentially saying those other departments also are not going to be seen paid increases.
Everybody, if we're going to do that, you ain't got to give everybody an increase. You can't increase all of them. You can't do it that way. That would not be fair.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's kind of doing salary studies every year. Wouldn't it be something that way we could just do a percentage increase annually and then revisit salary studies every 17 years? That way we know.
The numbers, the numbers jump so badly from cheap value. How much have police salaries jumped year to year to year? So if you were, if you were bumping it up 3% a year over the last three years, would you even be in the ballpark where you need to be right now?
I think so because the balance has picked up and then probably someone might be doing a job and so they recognize their viability and find someone willing to do it.
I want, I want to weigh in on that too, because we've, we've worked really hard on the salary increases, or salary study to make sure that we stay competitive and I think it's important, we haven't done it every year. We've done it every other year and had a, had a sort of a cursory look in the interim years. And so it's been almost a, a full blown one every other year, which I think is, has served us well. And I do think it's kept us in, in reasonable shape. Now, other people do go up, we all, you know, they raise 2% across the board or 3% across the board, but that really doesn't give you the value of the job. And so I think it, it serves us better to do it that way. And it really doesn't cost us anything because the, the Stennis Institute is a resource that we have used and they've been really good about assisting us with this as, as they have been about other things as well. But it's, it is more time at this point in time than it is, and of course, with the loss of Mr. Ashford, we've got a little gap going there. Greg's, you know, trying to juggle more balls with, with Nav now gone, but Nav is supposed to be having those discussions with the Stennis Institute folks, I think he said, Monday. So hopefully we'll have, by the time we have another board meeting, we will have a work session, which we can include some more budget discussion in the next board meeting, uh, next work session. We'll have, we should have that information.
I think, I think that our department is another one that the numbers jumped dramatically last year. So if we've been doing a consistent bump during the years, we would have been wiped off.
That's what I was thinking about. If you go to a percentage increase, the way the numbers bounces so much and ways the wages up and people giving what you, raises to it, it kind of benefits. I was thinking though, we got to keep in mind though, that's one thing would drive people to poverty and what drives people to pay their rent, you have so many homeless because they're not making enough income coming into their house. We got to keep that on in consideration too. And I know, I know how it is about raising millage and you know I don't like it, I don't like it, but we still got to find a way to cut. And we got to ask the department heads to go back and look at it and see what else they can do. And we just got to look and see what, what else we can do to get it back. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm for giving them a pay increase, I'm for that, you know, because they need one. And for us to stay competitive, we, we, we got to give them one, but we got to find ways to cut the money still.
Can I just clarify?
Sure.
I wasn't saying not get pay increases. I was just saying that way we, 450,000 is a lot, a big number of jump. That way we kind of can gauge what we know year to year, how much we're expecting to be increased by instead of doing salary study and being half a million versus.
Well, I've, I've just pointed it out.
That's the reason for the 95%.
Well, in, in my rough, 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 rough math, if we were doing the 3% budget every, every year, probably comes in at about 600,000 dollars.
And what, each, what, each employee get 19 cent, 20 cent?
But, but if, if, yeah, it's always going to be a large number because salaries are, salaries and benefits are 60, 65% for overall budget.
Well, and, and each, each value of each position differs. It just does. So we, you have to acknowledge that, you know, if you're, if you're doing one thing, then it's worth this much and if you're doing something else, it's worth something else. So I think we just need to pay attention to what that market says it's, says it's worth.
But it's going to be a big number and I have to.
Yes, no question about it. So where are we, Webb?
Where we, that's what I said, where we.
687,117 is what I've got.
And so if you were to put a millage to that, what is it?
Uh, 2.05, somewhere around there.
Okay, 2.05, to put us at 33.2?
And, and every year we talk about what, what does that mean to a $100,000 house? This year I actually, I actually pulled some specific houses with some specific assessed values and. And in one of our more affluent neighborhoods in the city.
And this is all with homestead exemption, right?
This is all with homestead exemption. In one of our more affluent neighborhoods in the city.
Yes, you did.
Two mills would be anywhere from 70 to 140 dollars.
Some people kissing the devil, pay what they got.
Yeah, and then in some, and then in a less affluent neighborhood, two mills would be anywhere from 25 to 30, or less, or less. Because those were houses, those were houses that, let me see if I can find some smallish numbers.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Keeping in mind that rate increases are obviously not the same as tax increases, would that increase not be less per month than what we just increased the sewer rates?
Cautionous.
Yes.
Okay.
Bottom line is.
So the board unanimously approved a rate increase, and not perhaps on the same page for a millage increase to make sure we can keep up with costs? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And of course, that depends on how much water you're using or how much, you know, how much you're generating through water and sewer use, but yes, that's pretty close to accurate, so. All right. You're the one voice we haven't heard from, Mr. Skinner. You wanna weigh in on what your thoughts are at this point?
Still just kinda looking through here and kinda getting up there and straight. I mean, I agree with Vice Mayor on police. I mean, we've got a lot of students that come into this town. We need to make sure that when those parents bring them, that they're safe. And also our citizens. You know, I feel like that's somewhere we gotta really stay in line, so.
Okay.
Along with his note, you gotta, you gotta class three rating again with the fire department, so you gotta maintain that.
Right, I mean.
They have to give those people the insurance now, so we got to maintain that.
Well, we've done that without the SAFER grant and without Fire Station 5 being open.
I'm going along with Vice Mayor, doing what the SAFER grant, we just keep cutting on.
Okay.
We'll get there. We always get there. We'll find a way to get there. We always do.
Okay, anybody got any other particular thoughts? Let's see.
I would suggest we get Web to rerun this with the things we've talked about today. Give the department heads another chance to come through before we have our first public hearing. Come through and see if they have any additional cuts. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out on a limb saying that our department heads have done a really good job of responding to the idea that there wasn't a lot of money for this upcoming year and to keep those numbers as low as possible. So I would give them one more effort to see what changes they might make. Most departments, it's gonna be a dollar here, a dollar there. There's just not gonna be much that moves the needle. I don't know if we are as committed to policing fires as we say we are and as we have shown to be, but there's much more for them to cut either. Because really, when you get to them, you're talking about people.
And the cameras are in here, too, are they?
The cameras are in here.
Yeah, just validating that out loud. Okay, well, our next work session will be associated with our board meeting, will be the 15th. And so we can have, we will have a parks presentation on their plan and their budgeting. And we will have an opportunity for further budgeting. And if each one of the department heads has some, upon reflection, any other thoughts, they can come back with that at that time. And we will also, we should have our salary study information to come back and bring that there so we can get closer to a firmer approach to it. And then we'll have our board meeting on the 19th, which will be our first public hearing, correct?
Board meeting on the 19th, then when you gonna schedule your budget meeting again?
Well, we may or may not need one, depending on what it ends up coming out to be. But we can have one in between the two. We can have one another at the next work session. So this was dedicated strictly to budget. We'll have two more work sessions before we have to adopt the budget. So we can roll those into that work session period and do it that way. And then we will have had a public hearing and then another public hearing on the 2nd, is that right? 19th and the 2nd?
2nd.
Right, right.
We stay prepped when we get there. We'll get there. We always do. I have no doubt. We'll get there.
Well, we certainly will in some form or other. We don't have any choice. Yes, ma'am.
State Statute, I have to send an ad to the paper advertising the public hearing. Based on what I've heard today, I'm gonna say the board is considering in the range of a two mill. So in a public hearing, when, you know, citizens speak or when voted or whatever, you don't have to pass that. That does not lock you into two mills. You could adopt higher, that would probably be, you know, bad if advertised a lower number. And definitely don't have to advertise that. But the wording of the ad is set by State Statute. The size, the font, the order, everything is in State Statute.
Yes.
So we have the choice of what to run the ad.
Well, no, we understand that, and that's the reason when we first started this meeting, I said we run it at the maximum allowed and from there we can take it down.
Yeah, or we can do three mills or we can do two. But I think we, I think everybody's agreed to get it down to at least two.
I don't think we necessarily have.
Well, we'll run it at the max.
Yeah, go with the higher number, because this has been just discussion, not a board.
Go with the original amount and from there, at the board meeting and at the work, well, not the work session, because we don't make decisions at work. At the board meeting, we will then have some opportunity to do one thing and then at the next board meeting, we'll have an opportunity to do the final, so. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, one legal point of order here. I would like for the attorney to meet with you and the clerk before they goes to the paper. And he, you understand, he'll communicate the reason I want him to meet with you. Basically for the benefit of the entire board. Let me just go ahead and say, tell you, so we're on record. We need to be really clear about what goes in the paper. And the attorney knows what's ahead with this, we have had this conversation with him. Is that the board, there's, no one has the authority today to legally put anything in the newspaper. Why? The board speaks through its minutes. She wants to put in the newspaper up to arrange, it may not be any millage. I mean, we're speculating, so our legal voice is the minute. So I would suggest, I saw the email, which I'll be really candid, attorney, just put it on the table. I'm gonna be really candid, this is good for all of us. And this is just lawyer's lawyer talk. He's the attorney for the board. He advised, he ruled. So when I saw the email from Mr. Comptroller, he indicated that we had to make a decision by, so that the announcement be in the newspaper on August 11 at noon. We don't meet before then. So I informed him that there's no way that can be legally tendered to the newspaper. And I said, well, why? Because we speak through our minutes. So for anyone to take anything to the newspaper, they're speaking for the board. That's just a legal point, but attorney, you can develop. I had to say this so the board could hear that. So that's a very fine point. I'm not the lawyer, but I just wanted to share that with the board, so it's on my mind. So the only way we can speak to anything, the only voice we have, and no disrespect to you know, we one family, one team, one community, we're all good. I know Vice Mayor has no discomfort, but you get the benefit of our legal knowledge. So I'm just saying that no one has no authority except through our minutes to take something to the newspapers and we may run an ad in the newspaper. So we may increase the millage up to two mill. They may come back and may not be, we don't know. That's speculation. I yield, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, for the purposes of this ad, we can put in an ad what we are considering before we take an official act, and I think that's the purposes of what we're gonna do there. What, the discussions that we've had here today are just considerations. There's no official action taken by this group today, and I'm comfortable with that. I have gotten comfortable that it's what we're considering. I suggest we go with the higher number, because that is what we're considering.
Read the ad, read the ad, read the first section of the ad.
State Statute says that it shall be running in the local newspaper seven days prior to the public hearing. So if we do not run anything by Tuesday, then you cannot hold a public hearing.
Read the ad, the part that we're talking about.
The ad will say, for the next fiscal year, the city of Starkville is considering to increase your average millage rate by up to three, up by three mills from the current rate of 32 mills to 31. This increase will mean that you have to pay more in annual taxes on the home, your on-the-look tag, your utilities, your business fixtures, your equipment, and your rental real property.
Okay, that was what I wanted, was the reading that says is considering. So, yes, okay.
Mayor, just one last quick 60-second lesson. The way we get around this next time, the way we do it, I'm not the lawyer, I'm not trying to be, but the way we get around that is we knew the deadline before we met on August 5. That should've come to us on August 5. Then we could avoid it, what I just said. This is lawyer, man. It's nothing policy. I'm trying not to get no shine here. Or what we could put it on, we could have a special call meeting. I'm not suggesting that. I'm just giving my benefit of my years of representing boards and commission at the state level. So that's all. We're in this together, attorney, you know.
Three hours.
That's the safest and conservative route. Yeah, that's the safest. I told attorney I feel more comfortable doing that. What are you gonna do?
To say yes to that.
Yeah, easily. A Monday before noon, 10 o'clock?
It needs to get to.
Yeah.
It really needs to get through today. They have cut all of the shop. They're gonna use down that full-time to part-time.
Whatever.
If we don't advertise Tuesday, then we're gonna wind up having to have a special call after the 2nd.
I guess I'm confused, because I think we have done this way before. And I must've, I must've slept if we did. So, yeah, I certainly was not intending to put us in any kind of awkward position because I did think we had had a, had a work session at which we just went with the maximum amount and then at some later point in time when we actually were at a meeting, we had done that. So legal counsel is comfortable with?
I'm comfortable with it. I called ethics yesterday and confirmed what we were doing. They were, they approved into their, that's the way they're done, and it's okay.
Okay, all right.
The Vice Mayor's question is authorizing the city court to run an ad.
Yeah, at a particular number, but she's.
Just authorizing her to run an ad, period.
Oh, you don't have any latitude about running an ad?
Y'all have said a public hearing for office tonight.
Yes.
I have to run an ad off of that public hearing.
Yeah, no, I think, I think the concern is the number, putting a number in there. And I believe that is number. The ethics is comfortable, that it is what we consider today and it's not an official board action.
So when we approved him to public hearing by virtue of that, we beg for authorization for an ad?
Yes, that's great. It was just what number we were going to fill in. And what we'll do next time is we'll do it a little bit differently with a little more other lead time and we'll manage it that way. But this year, if we are legal counsel comfortable, ethics is comfortable, we've approved of running an ad and that's how we will do it, so. All right, what else? Anything else? Web, do you have appropriate information?
I believe so.
That you can pull from, and do you have a number at this point, just for fun?
I think it's still at 687.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I wanted to add.
Yep, 687 and some change.
Okay.
And when can you need the department heads to give you any?
I'm assuming we're gonna have a work session next Friday, probably Wednesday, so I can work on it.
And that's when they'd have their stuff to lose anyway, so it'll be a joint effort.
I would also invite anybody, any department head that wants to come to our office Monday or Tuesday and go over your detailed budget and work in with Web on it.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll make time this weekend, next week, whenever.
Did you leave it at 300 on the raises or 450 or 250?
300 I think is what.
Okay, so that's what you've got in there for the, to reach the 6. No, I understand.
Which would be smaller raises for a favorable G.
Yes, well, or, or 95% versus 90%, which is hopefully.
What did we give last year?
100%.
Yeah, it's like.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we got, we did.
And then in the form of the government choices, elections, fire department, police got substantial raises, too.
All right, what else, guys? Anything else? All right, it's been a good session. Appreciate it. We got lunch back here, so. Oh, there's no rounding back.